Morning.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. With me today have Don Schmanker, Ben Flagle, myself, Mike Stinas are your county supervisors. Lisa Smith is our county auditor.
Good morning.
Bjorn is our IT director, and Luann is our executive assistant, and Mary is here with the newspaper. First on our agenda this morning, we have a public hearing scheduled at nine AM on the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan. So at this time, we will open that public hearing to any comments, concerns, questions that anyone may have. Is there anyone in the, in the room or via Zoom that has any input on the comprehensive plan?
I have received no feedback one way or the other.
I received one call that was late last night, and she said he didn't agree about everything that was in it. And I said, well, that certainly, your objection to have that, and we're open to any comments or criticisms, or if we need to change something, we certainly can, but until we have something formal or, you know, that we can work with, but that's all I end.
I didn't have anything.
I didn't have anything come to my office. I've not received any comments.
So again, we appreciate very much the, the work that the committee has done, the time they've put into it. A very, very, again, detailed. Somebody tell me how three hundred and some pages? Again, but it's a vision, so it's a vision for Jackson County, not that we can't change or go through it and amend, or, you know, so we have a plan going forward. Is it for even for grants, things like that, we have a vision, so that's what they want to see. That's what they want to hear, that we have a, a master plan, if you will, so.
And the one thing people need to remember is this isn't a set in stone thing that you absolutely have to follow. The, the document is malleable, you can't, it can't be amended, changed, adapted, so, you know, because it's hard to look twenty years into the future and figure out where you're going to be, but this does give us a direction to go.
Hard to look five years into the future. So our plans could change, I mean, we all don't know what's going to happen in five years, ten years, fifteen years, so.
Could be dramatic.
We got, yeah, at least we got a direction to start walking.
But it points out our strengths and our weaknesses, if, if, well, you know, so, yeah, at least we have some sort of parameters to follow.
So as I said at the public hearing last week, it is a policy guide, it's adopted by resolution. It does not have the effect of an ordinance for floodplain regulation or any other ordinance that the county has. It is indeed a guide, it's a roadmap to your future. It is also based on planning efforts you have done over the last ten years, and are continuing to do on an annual basis. So you have done a lot of planning, this is pulling things together into a comprehensive vision, as you said, of where this county community would want to in the future. Absolutely, it is a guide. If you want to take a turn at one of the forks in the road and go a different direction, because things have changed, that's what you should do. Look back on what we did before COVID, look at what we do now. Things can change in a matter of months, years, and this plan is there to help you decide where's the best way to make the investment, what are the best things we can do in support in our community, and that's what it's here for. Thank you for your support.
We thank you. Any other comments?
I would just, again, like to openly thank the people that all sat on the committee. As we talked about, we have a well-versed group of people from all areas of the county, all different walks of life.
I would agree, our, our coverage of plans steering committee did a wonderful job of supporting the zoning commission. The zoning commission is doing the day-to-day work, and to have that extra support that you provided for that committee, they welcome that. They also worked tirelessly on this plan and provided us with very good direction. They were very into where we were getting our public input, where we're maximizing what we could do, so they were very much keeping this transparent and inclusive.
Again, how many different places could we find this plan if somebody wants to read it?
It will be sent to all of the surrounding counties. It will be sent to East Central Intergovernmental Association, which is our regional planning agency based out of Dubuque. It'd also be in all the public libraries in this county.
Okay, and it's also online.
It will be online, yes, thank you.
So to our county website.
It's there right now, right here.
And it is on the mass or the main page, or do we have to go to zoning? You have, it's on the main page, right?
It's on the main page.
Thank you.
With that, motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Now we have discussion and possible action on the resolution approving the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan.
This is Resolution ten fifty-three dash zero six dash twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty-four. I make a motion to approve the resolution.
There you go. You can correct it, too.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the, approving the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you in a few minutes.
Okay. Lisa, do we have the resolutions that were presented? Do we have all them?
On paper?
Yeah.
So they were emailed to you last night, if you want, because there was a resolution that had some questions on it, I assume that resolved this morning. Shelley doesn't traditionally like to put resolutions on resolution paper, you know, you guys, but if you want them, I certainly can have Shelley do it quickly. If you want paper copies of them, yes.
Um, I think I do. If that's, if that's not an issue.
I'll take care of it.
Do we need to take a break?
I'm gonna, I'll send Shelley an email.
We're joined by Jayden Chuckell, our Assistant Jackson County Engineer. Good morning, Jayden.
Good morning. Good morning. First on our agenda is discussion action on the fuel bids. So we sent out our annual gasoline and diesel fuel bids to our providers. One of the four we sent them to, we got back, we received bids from two. River Valley, River Valley Energy out of Bellevue, and then Mole Group Oil Company. A little bid on that one was River Valley. And mind you, they're just bidding on their essentially profit, we, for our fuel, we get we get the weekly rack rates, for the best way to put it, so what they're bidding on is essentially their profit is what that is, but all in all, River Valley Energy was the lowest bid for that, so we recommend awarding to River Valley Energy for fiscal year twenty-five for diesel and gas.
And can you tell me what that was?
Yep, so their, for gasoline, their price per gallon was point three four nine dollars, so. I'll, I'll put it all in dollars to me, cents, rather than saying cents, I'll just put it all in dollars. Diesel fuel number two was point oh eight five. Winter blend was point one three nine, and their additive was point oh one five.
Okay. That's fish at Mary?
Okay. Is it easier if I send? Or do you want to look at it?
Send it to me, it would be perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve fuel bids as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve the low bid as presented on the fuel bids. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Next is our annual LP bids, and this is LP for our shops to, for winter. We sent it to four bid, the same four bidders again for the LP, received three bids back. Agvantage, Mulgrew, and Eastern Iowa LP. So this one, I'll read off all their prices. Mulgrew was the highest at one dollar and twenty-six cents per gallon. The remaining two, Agvantage and Eastern Iowa LP, are both the low bid at the same exact price of a dollar and twenty-one cents per gallon. So we've never had this happen before, so we consulted with the county attorney on how to proceed, and after he did research, what it was decided was that we would split our contract in half and award equal halves to the two low bidders.
Have we checked with both of them that they'll stand at that bid for less gallons?
We have not, we figured we'd send them this, and if they disagree or don't like it, we'll just, if they want to opt out, I guess we awarded all to the other one.
I did get a call from one of the bidders, was wondering how it was, how it was going to work. He must have heard that that was a tie, and he, and he said, well, flip a coin. And I said, well, we feel that fair and the right way to do it, according to our county attorney, is to award each half. And I asked if that was sufficient to him, and he said, yeah.
Yeah, so how, so Agvantage is obviously McCoquodary, so the southern half of the county, Eastern Iowa's out of Lamont, out of the north half, so we figured, well, let's split our shops evenly that way. Lamont would, or Eastern Iowa would essentially take our northern shops, Agvantage on McCoquodary would take our southern shops, as well as the courthouse, outlying shed here, there's some small field tanks, so they all got four locations.
Well, and it makes sense for travel time for them to, to be.
So with that, we prepared contracts for each Agvantage and Eastern Iowa specifying what shops they are delivering to. I'll just list it off here, Eastern Iowa, we have that they would supply to our Bellevue, Butler, Otter Creek, and Spring Brook Shops. Agvantage would deliver to our Baldwin, Iron Hill, Sterling, and our courthouse. A little shed out there, because the remaining of our shops are supplied with just natural gas, so. That was the first for us running into this issue, and first for Todd as well. So we recommend awarding equal halves to Agvantage and Eastern Iowa LP for fiscal year twenty-five LP.
I make a motion to approve that awarding as stated.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the low bids for LP supply to Agvantage and Eastern Iowa LP as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
That's going to need chair somebody.
Yes, definitely. Last, just wanted to put on the agenda. Last week, I think it was last Monday, we received notice from Buchanan County's attorney of their termination of the twenty-eight-year agreement for the use of their assistant engineer, Alex, for our counties, or his services for our county. So that, they gave us the ninth, for the agreement, they gave us the ninety days advance notice, so his services will end, will be terminated on September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So doesn't need to prove anything, but just wanted to, I guess, formally acknowledge that we have received their termination request.
Okay, and is there other work to be completed in that timeframe yet, or?
Yeah, we've talked to Alex and the remaining bridge inspections through them, he will do all the way. He'll end on September fifteenth, but he's also going to complete all of them prior to that, or do, and then all of them, and in the month of September, he'll have done two, and it's not a whole lot, it's only six bridges, I believe, but he will get those wrapped up, and in the meantime, we'll be determining the best way to move forward with that, with bridge inspections, that is.
Yep, okay, well, yeah, whatever we come up with, we'll have to decide. Again, send him a letter, please, of his appreciation for his work, and I think it was a good working relationship, so.
It is a bit odd to receive the letter when we went through the contract negotiations over the last few months.
Yeah. Yeah, I know things change, and, and people get busy, and so I don't know every, all the situation, but it's, again, we were.
You have certification out of the bridges, correct, or are you getting there?
I've got it, I don't think I am team leader qualified on our bridge, okay, too far to be a bridge SIMS program, but, so we're kind of going, or trying to determine if it makes sense, I think Todd and I talked about, maybe the bridges that have been reconstructed within the last ten years, us handling internally and the rest, we go out for proposal to receive inspections done simply the fact of, of we don't, aren't successful in our search for an assistant. The amount of bridges that have to be inspected, it's just time constraints with everything, so. But it also benefit for ourselves internally to do some of those, so, yeah, we're talking about doing some and then sending out some as well, so.
Well, we need to make.
Any other outside counties that may?
That are just similar to Buchanan County. I know Todd's got some in Clinton County, his staff is certified, but he'd want to ask them first what they're willing to do, because he knows they're kind of tasked with a lot down there with the construction projects, they got all their bridges, and if they're willing to take extra time, but I don't know, certainly, like, what Dubuque County does or Jones County does for their bridge inspections, but we can certainly reach out and see the best route to move forward.
Yeah, investigate that a little bit.
It's on our to-do list here in the very immediate future.
I guess, you know, I haven't talked to you as far as applications is, do you know, have we received any applications for assistant?
So it's still on our website, we don't have it, I guess, after we were originally posting back in, probably a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
It's still on our county website, so it's still open, we just don't have it run in the paper again, or pushing ads that way, until, I figure we get, wait till we get closer to fall timeframe when career fairs, and I'd start opening up with students to try to get maybe some new grads or something like that, or interest from new grads and what have you, so. It's open, but it's just not fully posted like it normally would be, we're going to wait to do that.
Running weekly.
Is it out there on the state site or something like that for engineers, or what's available, things like that, that's what.
Yeah, there's an internal service bureau. Okay, so that's all that, just wanted to give some quick updates on, first, I'll start with just real generic, we, for our geo permits, that is now live and active for, for geo permits for our entrance permit, that includes new entrance, extension, and culvert replacement. Those are live on GeoPermits website, the link is Bjorn set up on our, our webpage as long as with the county homepage, so you'll be able, people will be able to find it there, so as entrance permits come in, we're going to strongly encourage them to go through the geo permits process, and knowing that's going to be hard from the start, but.
We need to have phased into that, yep, no doubt.
Just wanted to give an update to the public on that. Next is on two sixty-seventh street, we have received our culvert material, because that'd be the, for the, this is the level C again, mind you, to bring up to level A, we received the culvert material. We plan to be installing that the week of July, weather dependent, of course. We have notified the McHughes of that, and we've also sent another letter to the adjacent property owner about that fence needs to be removed by then, because we can't replace the culvert till that fence is moved, and we'll be following that code if need be, and something, if it comes to that, so. I just wanted to give an update on that. And last is on one hundred and sixty-seventh street, this is over by the Streets Cemetery, north of Iron Hill area. About a month and a half ago, we, in that road, just west of the Streets Cemetery, there is an eight-by-eight box culvert with about a twelve-foot tall retaining wall on top of that. So the road sits very high, bare to the bottom of the street. Had some rains back then, and the re, north half of the retain, the north retaining wall gave out, blew out, so we had to close the road, and it is still close to this day. We're going to work on repairing that wall to get the road open back up, we're going to be working with Clinton County, because they're going to have to dry some steel piling, and so wood, old wood piling, so we're in a new piling driven, our guys will repair the back wall, but just wanted to give an update in case that you maybe had calls or anything on that road being closed for an extended period of time, so.
A question I'm going to ask Nate, too, but any preparation with the, the list that we're getting forecasted to be about nineteen feet? Is there anything we have to do, or will you be affected too much?
As far as it relates to us, no. Maybe Green Island River would be.
Yeah.
Depending what happens, the levees down by the Green Island, Wethlin area, there could be, maybe Green Island Road would be an issue, but short of that, I don't, can't think of any outland, because last spring, when we had the, the major flooding, that was really our only problem area, so.
We had to close that for emergency purposes before, so.
Is it, is it expected to?
Yeah.
I only have a little patch, I don't, beyond.
Is it, okay.
So. July, first, what I read this morning, or twenty, I don't know.
I just looked here and there, right now, it's forecasted eighteen-eight, like next Tuesday, and it's still going, it's not, doesn't look like it's cresting.
Yes, I would expect to close them on Green Island Drive.
So everybody be aware, anyway, we can't do anything about the river, the rain, so just be aware, and be, be careful, be safe with it, be smart, you know. Boaters especially, be smart, it's running pretty wild already, and there's large, large items coming down the river.
Thank you.
That was all I had.
I was going to say, were you done?
I, yeah, I guess I just, maybe just touch on two fifty, is that correct?
Yep, they have finished there on both lanes, they're leveling course today. They're waiting to see what the weather does, but they plan on starting the, the second of the four lifts today, which is the interlayer, so.
I drove it Sunday, it's, where they kind of leveled it, it is a lot smoother, it's not getting a big difference.
They must be starting right at the intersection today, because I was stopped on sixty-two.
So they, which is, with, with each lift, they have to progress further and further to the south on the, on highways, or towards Highway sixty-two.
Right.
And so they won't get into the intersection, but they do have flaggers there, because if you, by the time you go to the pilot park, you have a long queue of vehicles lined up, they don't want them extended off into a Highway sixty-two intersection, so they flag off sixty-two.
Yeah.
So, but yes, they start from the south and are working north.
Good enough.
It should get smoother as each lift goes on.
Yeah.
I've not heard nothing but good things.
Good, hopefully, hopefully goes as smooth as all the rest of projects, or, or all of the projects go, so.
Thanks, Jayden.
Yep.
Nathan Jones, Jackson County. Uh, we should do visitors. Are there any visitors or citizens here today to approach the board? Seeing or hearing none, we will invite Nathan Jones to come forward, or Conservation Director. For an update, good morning.
Morning, guys, how are you?
They see Spruce Creek's getting a little water in it.
Yeah, I guess we could start with the dark horse. Yeah, we shut Spruce Creek down yesterday. With the, as you said, eighteen-eight without a forecasted current, so I've talked to a few people who have heard around twenty, somewhere in there, and eighteen and twenty, so. With that being said, we have to pull electrical boxes in the campground, yet they're starting, after I leave here, I'll be going over and helping pull. We got shut Seville Lake down, because the road will be under at sixteen-three at Fulton Gage, hits that this week down there, too, so we don't let people drive through the, most of that campground should stay out of the water, other than the oversights, so, but that's, that campground we're shutting down, hopefully that one will open sooner than Seville, or Spruce is the one that, who knows when the foreseeable, their up is to the water. Luckily, it's been kind of a clean flood, other than debris, but it's not real muddy yet. I'm expecting that with some of that stuff coming down, that's when our problems start.
Have you heard anything about that bridge fail, or that dam failure up in Manicato, how that's going to affect the river?
I haven't, I'm hoping they have that all figured in there, gauges and readings, and we don't see a huge spike somewhere. There is several boats still in the harbor, but the way our contract's written up, that's on, they're responsible to get it out. We set our ramps back on the docks, because we were going to lose our ramps if we wait any longer, too, so. Hopefully, those people are responsible enough for the next day or two to figure out how to get their boats out of there, if they don't want to.
Lose them.
Storm.
I see there was a few in there Sunday, yeah, there wasn't many, but.
Yeah, but some got pulled yesterday, I saw, but people are starting to, maybe realize it's going to, I don't think a lot of people even, were thinking flood right now, if we're still getting a lot of calls about the campaign and everything, well, that just.
Yeah, it was probably only a foot from the top of the bridge plank, and then, I think it went up that foot already in the last.
When I, when I left last night, it was over the top of them, so.
So when floods at fifteen feet, basically?
Yeah, we have to shut, shut our water system down at fifteen feet. There's stuff that isn't, that's still out of the water, but we can't keep campground open without water system on.
Say you're calling for almost other five, four and a half feet right now, probably five feet, so.
Yeah, so that's enough, I guess, I keep crossing my fingers every time they update it, and I see a peak in that, but it hasn't shown yet, so.
I don't know, Telegraph this morning said that they thought it was going to crest in Dubuque on the first, but I, I don't know if they, exactly.
I looked up river, I think Dubuque was the second that started showing, so, but they haven't shown it at ours, I don't know if there's what the reason is usually, so those are the big things. Other things in the last month or two, we've had quite a bit of storm damage from those winds that ran through McCoquodary, a few of our properties, so we'll be working with our forester on seeing if we can do any salvage cuts to try to get some value out of trees that were blown over, or tops that were broken out before they rot and had problems. So we're going to see, see if there's anything that, that brings enough value to have a logger or somebody come in to cut those.
True.
We still don't have all of our trails cleared off, even from them, yet, so, so there's some areas, if you hear some points, we, we haven't gotten to everything.
Work in progress.
Yep, so that's, that's one of those things, been working on this flood through, and on top of that, so. But those are kind of the main things. Another thing kind of on your minds probably is our display at the center. We've raised a hundred and eight, over a hundred and eighty thousand of the one hundred and ninety-eight goal, thousand goal. I submitted four more grants last week, so I would think we're going to be right there by the time it's done for cost. Hopefully, we can get those, we had to wait till, a lot of them didn't open till June, and there's a couple open in July, we'll throw in on two, so we'll see, that's starting to come along, that's, and they're getting ready to actually start construction on the cave portion at their facility to get ready to bring it up. Yeah, so that's, other than that, it's just trying to catch up washed-out roads and general things like that, and go from there, so.
Iron Bridge Road, did you guys?
Yeah, I saw your text, so we haven't gotten there yet, but it's on our list, that's this week, so.
Yeah, I saw somebody come in, like, kind of a bunch of logs and branches and stuff.
That was from that storm, we just haven't gotten in there to clean it up, and I want to brush off the trail, too, here north of town, so hopefully we can get all of our electrical pole today, and a lot of time tomorrow, to get at some of that stuff. So, but that is on our list, because I know that's, is that this week?
Yeah, it's Saturday.
Yeah, it's this Saturday.
Weather permitting, because I see we're supposed to get rain Friday and into Saturday.
We don't need anymore.
Yeah, so.
No, I mean, we were back in Florida a year ago, so, you know, things change, but.
I think this exact same thing happened in two thousand and eleven, from a drought in two thousand and twelve, we were almost record flood, so.
It's a vicious cycle.
Yep, so.
Well, we don't want to hold you up, you've got work to do.
Yep.
I appreciate the update.
Thank you, guys.
Hang in there, get your boots on.
Yep, yep, it'll be waiters today.
Thanks, Nate.
Yeah.
Morning. At least for us to keep, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Luann?
Good morning. Good morning. Okay, starting with the calendar today, at eleven o'clock this morning is the McCoquodary River Watershed Management Authority's Farmer Field Day in Earlville, in Delaware County, which I didn't hear that anybody wanted to go to, that's a meeting this morning, so. Tomorrow morning at nine AM on June twenty-sixth is an IRIS meeting in Dubuque, or by Zoom, that's for Ninn. And at six o'clock tomorrow night, it's a Jackson County EMS Association Special Meeting by Zoom for Mike and Ninn. Thursday, June twenty-seventh, the Treasurer's Office will be closed all day that day for DOT training. At nine AM, there's an RPA meeting in Dubuque, or by Zoom, for Don and Ninn. And at noon is a. And at noon is a Bellevue Leadership Community Meeting by Zoom for Mike. On Friday, June twenty-eighth, the Treasurer's Office will be closing early for fiscal year end work, it will be closing at two PM. Also, on Thursday and Friday, I will be out of the office both of those days. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July second, at nine AM. And at ten thirty that morning, uh, we'll adjourn in time. At ten thirty is the Innovate One Twenty UX Design Summer Intern Class Presentation, for any of you that want to go to that. And I did, uh, we also had on that day Rachel Anderson, um, from Congresswoman Mary Miller Meeks' office. Will be here that morning for a visit. And I think she's going to the same thing over at Innovate One Twenty, so. Uh, the only other bit of business I have this morning, um, is a motion to approve a fireworks permit. For Terry Cavada on Highway sixty-four in Sebula for the Fourth of July.
Um, I guess I looked at that, I, I don't know that they called, did, did you talk to this person at all? There's several residents right around that site, so I hope that he's made contact with his neighbors, I didn't see a lot of. Livestock operations around it, but there was several residents.
He has had a permit in the past.
Okay, and there's not been any complaints?
No.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Motion to second to approve the fireworks permit as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
I, I thought I had for you.
Thank you.
I have quite a few.
Oh, yeah, I see that. You wanna start at it, or?
You tell me if you.
I think we might as well, there's nobody else here right now, if you, if it's okay with you, if you'd rather do it.
No, we'll get through it. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four board proceeding as written by Auditor Smith. And authorized publication in the official newspapers, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
Very good.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four board proceedings and publication. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve chair signature on the certificates of substantial completion from peak construction, hometown mechanical. Proper Heating and Cooling, Midwest Automatic Fire Sprinkler Company, and Stipley Electric Inc. For the Jackson County Fair and ISU four H Outreach Center Building. This means the project is completed.
We've paid retentions and everything, or are we still waiting on bills?
We haven't paid anything, so it's all up to, I don't know, we haven't received anything as far as any pay ups or anything, so. I'm going to assume that everything's been paid, but we haven't received anything.
My second question with that is, we had things that we knew weren't appropriately done yet.
I know there were some door issues and stuff.
And I know that, don't they have like a year?
Well, they have a year, but. They haven't addressed these issues yet.
This, um, this I, I received when I, I was at a meeting and John had brought these in while I was gone, I didn't get a chance to talk to him. So I don't know what.
I mean, because I'm assuming you're, you're starting from saying this is complete, right?
I would assume so, and, and it's all the, releasing all of the bonding companies and insurance companies and, I mean.
Do we hold off until next week? I'm assuming John's on the schedule for next week, if he's not on this one?
If he shows up.
But he's scheduled to be here next week?
I tried to schedule one of these, when we need to get his pay ups and so we can do claims, but he doesn't always show up when I tell him to.
I'm just wondering, put him on the schedule for next week and we can ask him about those questions.
I think he's on there already for next week. And she lies, yes.
Would you also personally try to phone, phone him and test base about showing up then?
Okay.
So.
I'll resend my, I'll resend what, um, what I was asking for.
Does this, does this do anything for the end of year? No, we still.
No, this is just.
Okay.
Because I didn't receive the change order from, from him either concerning the flooring at the Law Enforcement Center. You know, he was here last week, I didn't receive anything on that, I assume it's gonna come next week. I don't know. So, uh, I guess we keep moving forward here, I need a motion to approve resolution. Number ten forty-three dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five appropriations by department.
Which, in short, mean?
Forty-three, um, what you're, what we're saying is because effective July first, it's our new fiscal year, so this is the end of the year process that we do. Um, come July first, we can start, actually, we can start spending money again, it's a new budget year. Some counties, and there are some counties in the state of Iowa that they do not appropriate a hundred percent of the budget. Um, to each department, we do, we appropriate a hundred percent. Of what all of these departments have asked for, we appropriate, and that's what this resolution is for. Is it's just saying we're appropriating, um, a hundred percent of your budget back to your department.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Motion to approve.
Very good.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution ten forty-three dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four as presented. Although the favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve resolution ten forty-four dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. Naming Jackson County or County Officers Bank Depositories for Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five. For the Recorder and the Sheriff Designated Banks to Deposit Revenues Held in Their Trust Accounts. This just allows those two, those two offices to deposit the money that they receive into those two, um, into the bank account. So moved on that motion.
Very good.
Motion second to approve resolution number ten forty-four dash zero six dash twenty-five. Dash twenty twenty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Need a motion to approve resolution ten forty-five dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. Naming the Jackson County Bank Depositories for Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five. The financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the County Treasurer's Office. What this means is that we do not deposit all of our funds into one bank account, we have several. Uh, bank accounts across, and I, do they list, I paid also.
They were in the resolution, yes.
So I paid is just another one, um, we move money around, and we also have. Um, an amount that we cannot exceed when it comes to those banks, and that's what we're asking for. So we can only deposit so much.
Second.
Motion second to approve resolution ten forty, ten forty-five dash zero six. Dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four as presented, although the favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Okay, so then I need a motion to approve resolution ten forty-six dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. For designation of County Bank for Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five, Designating MacOquodun State Bank for County Warrants and Payroll Warrants. Um, years ago, we used to be switching back and forth between the two banks, and it was. Really was kind of a pain because we had to have two different sets of checks, and so, because of what's happening lately, um. Now we just designate MacOquodun State Bank for County Warrants and Payroll.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve resolution ten forty-six dash zero six. Dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve resolution ten forty-seven dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. For issuing county warrants and allowing the auditor to issue warrants without the prior approval of the board. For payment on freight, postage, express, payrolls, water, lights, telephone, contractual services, witness fees. School instruction registration fees and mileage.
What's express?
I think that's a type of, um, uh, freight, like if we have to send something, yeah. These are the only reasons.
You have to do that every year.
Yeah. This, this resolution is, and this is by code.
And we talked about this briefly before the meeting, it's, it's a consent agenda type thing, can we maybe, maybe look into that a little more? I don't, I don't know, I mean, I see others doing it, I don't know if it's necessary or not.
Um, I will possibly be able to talk to someone in Des Moines next, this week.
Yeah.
Second thought.
A motion and a second to approve resolution ten forty-seven dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four as presented. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried, it just seems like you should have that authority to do that without having a resolution every year to.
Oh, no, this is, we have to do that.
Yeah.
That, this is by code, we have to do these. Um, because this is authorizing us to do everything that we do, is we're getting authorization to do it. Mm-hmm, yeah. I need a motion to approve resolution ten forty-eight dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. For inter-fund operating transfers, authorizing the auditor to periodically transfer sums from the general basic and real services basic funds. To the secondary roads fund during the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year. So moved.
Very good.
Motion second to approve resolution ten forty-eight dash zero six. Dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve resolution ten forty-nine dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. For Township Officials reimbursement with a compensation rate of twenty-five dollars per meeting. And for clerks' bookwork of twenty-five dollars per month, not to exceed three hundred dollars per year.
Second.
Motion and second to approve resolution ten forty-nine dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve resolution number ten fifty dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. For payroll for Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five, and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Who's watching there?
It does not.
I'm hoping in a second to approve resolution ten fifty dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. Um, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve resolution number ten fifty-one dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. Setting the compensation of all election board members and other temporary election officials and the hours and mileage rates. So moved.
Very good.
Motion second to approve resolution ten fifty-one dash zero six. Dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Need a motion to approve resolution number ten fifty-two dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. For the annual operating transfer for three thou, three thousand two hundred dollars from the general basic oh one thousand. Historic Preservation Fund twenty-nine thousand, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. So moved.
Very good.
Motion second to approve resolution ten fifty-two dash zero six dash twenty-five. Dash twenty twenty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
That's all.
A lot of resolutions you got going on.
This helps us end, end the fiscal year twenty-four and to begin fiscal year twenty-five.
Do, do we get to like have a celebration then, like you?
You know, I mean, this.
Yeah, the life first, yeah. Okay, is that all on your agenda?
That is it.
Thank you. And we're joined by Becky Chapman, our Director of Human Resource, good morning.
Good morning. All right, just a couple more things for you today for staffing transitions within the county. So Ruth Eltrich, who is our Administrative Assistant for Zoning and Health Offices, has resigned that position. And she is accepting the Administrator of Veterans Affairs position, so. I heard the gaps there.
We got a lot of, we got a lot of moans and groans and, and, uh, sound effects going on here.
So I would ask for a motion to accept the resignation from Ruth Eltrich as the Administrative Assistant effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
I'll second that.
As motion and a second to accept the resignation of Ruth Eldridge. As presented, any further discussions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
And then I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Ruth Eltrich as the Administrator of Veterans Affairs effective July first, twenty twenty-four. At a starting salary of forty-nine thousand five hundred, increasing to fifty-five thousand upon successful completion of accreditation through the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers. Including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks or the same.
Motion and second to, uh, approve Ruth Eldridge as the Veterans Affairs Administrator as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye opposed, motion carried.
And then we also recently advertised for the CBSO Confidential Secretary position that was vacated by Lucille when she transitioned to the Assistant in Veterans Affairs. Um, we did make an offer for the position and it has been accepted. So I would ask for a motion to approve the hire of Tricia Kilburg as the CBSO Confidential Secretary effective July eighth, twenty twenty-four. At a starting rate of pay of nineteen dollars per hour, with a one dollar increase upon accreditation through the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers. And a sixty cent increase upon successful six-month review, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks or the same.
So this is the.
Part-time.
Lucille's position that she vacated when she became the.
Yeah, so they're a secretary, but they are also accredited through the CBSO, so we don't have issues if there's transition with having, um. Access to federal programs, so we can, we make that an accredited position as well.
Second.
I have motion and a second to approve the hiring of Tricia Kilburg as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
All I got.
So, that still means to me, if I'm doing my numbers right, we're still missing a person.
Which we are actively advertising.
Okay, I, I don't know that I heard that, but I've, I assumed that we were advertising for that position and. And. Some of them were aware of that position, maybe.
I'm sure, yeah, I've already had a couple of people reach out, so I'm sure.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, yeah, and again, we wish. Ruth the best, who's been a very good employee, and if we could send her, thank you for her. Time here with us in the courthouse, um, she's not too far away, but we appreciate work, I'm sure Lori appreciated the work she did and.
Is there some kind of obligation, or she's gotta be obligated to stay there for?
We'll give you that position, but you can't go over.
Ability would be a major thing to have in that office, we've had quite a bit of turnover the last few years, so.
Yeah.
Do we have any balls and chains around here?
We'll see what we can do, we'll save you for the cost for that.
Okay, thank you, Becky. All right, moving on, uh, we're down to Lori Rolling, our Jackson County Zoning Administrator, good morning again, Lori.
Hey, guys. We're a one-man show again, pretty quick.
Well, keep running them off.
Oh, good gosh. Oh, I don't think that's the case, so, I won't take that one, I won't take that one personally.
We appreciate the work she's done and the work that you do in that office.
She's a rock star for you guys.
Yeah, hopefully we could get, uh, you know, there's. We'll, we'll see what happens.
So, first thing up there looks like is, um, the. PC, lot one PC Acres, um, resolution for minor subdivision. They have met all the requirements for that minor subdivision, when we spoke, you and I spoke, Mike, last week. They didn't have their attorney's title opinion done yet, that's all done, so, um. Just waiting for the resolution, we'll get everything signed and recorded and move this one on if you choose to adopt it. I sent you the, the, the paperwork, so you guys could kind of visualize where it was. I'm in here, I'll kind of explain why we're doing this as a minor subdivision, we're, oh, you wanna, you'll go to them online.
Does anybody wanna see it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I did send it to you, yeah, oh, yeah, because you were gonna load it right away, um. The, the reason we're doing it as a minor subdivision is it's right on the.
City?
Yeah, the city falls into that quarter-quarter. So where Dunn's subdivision is.
Right.
So there's way more than three, three surveys out of that quarter-quarter, there's like dozen plus. But that's why this fell into a minor subdivision.
So just briefly explained, so it's also went to the city of Bellevue and they have approved it.
Correct, yeah, we have assigned, um.
I mean, I don't know if you wanna see it on Beacon or not, you can see it there, but it's right on Mill Creek.
Right on Mill Creek, yeah. So, but if you guys wanna see it, I'd be more than happy to point it out on Beacon, why, why we're doing what we're doing.
I'm familiar, I don't need to see it, but I.
And believe me, if we didn't have to go minor, it's just so much easier for the taxpayer, the. It's less cost for them if they don't have to go minor subdivision, it's, you know. Because there's additional attorney fees, um, additional surveying cost, so if we didn't have to jump through this, we wouldn't be.
I mean, yeah, it is a family member also, so it's like, it's.
Poison, I don't know that, I never know that. Terry, if I was asked him, you wanna know, but, yeah, okay, so, anyway, falls near quarter.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Very good.
Motion and a second.
This is resolution number ten fifty-four dash zero.
This is resolution number ten fifty-four dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty-two four.
Have motion and a second to approve resolution number as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and then if I remember the order that's on the agenda, the next one's, um, wanted to talk to you guys about extending the wind moratorium that we have out there that expires August thirty-first. We could do it sometime the first of August, end of July, whatever you wanted. But I can promise you, we will not have this completed by the end of August.
I would certainly agree, um, that there's a lot of information to be obtained and, and a lot of input.
Well, it isn't that we didn't try to get input sooner, like we talked about earlier. I mean, we've been doing this since.
Yeah.
Well, we started talking about this last February, March.
I was gonna say.
We put our moratorium in place in May. We started looking at different rep, um, different ordinances from other counties for you guys to review, and I might be off, but I know we the first time it went to the commission was in October, and we had an open meeting every month. Every single month. First time we had anybody was April. And, um, but anyway, it's not for lack of trying and.
Well, then I, I sent you that email about that gentleman that reached out from over by Mechanicsville that probably is gonna need to add a little bit because he had two of them on his property, and he thought it was great till it got struck by light. Both of them ended up getting struck by lightning. One's been there fifteen months. It's raining fiberglass, and right now it's affected two hundred and thirty of his acres that he can't farm with because it's covered in fiberglass and the, the company's like, we're getting to it. And so, you know, that kind of stuff. He recommended some kind of penalty or inaction of getting rid of said debris because the lightning prevention within his windmills both were faulty or broke, and that's why they got struck by lightning. It caught fire and they burned.
So, yeah, we, we still have a lot of discussion. I guess you're asking to extend the moratorium, is that correct?
Yes, I'm thinking, am I, am I being optimistic when I say the end of December potentially?
I'll make a motion to extend it a year.
A year?
Yeah.
So you wanna say end of fiscal year next year?
Sure.
June thirty?
I think in June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Sure. And then, and if we get something in place, it can be. Okay, cause last time you guys were pushing me, it's like, why August? Can't you have this done sooner?
I mean, you know, like you said, you're.
We're gonna make sure it'll be that.
I agree.
You're one man show. There's a lot of input, you know, and we could discuss that and.
It's never gonna be right.
Well, no. I mean, you're gonna have, no matter what we do, we're somewhere, somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
There's gonna be somebody upset or not liking.
Yeah.
There's a fine line.
Oh, I do agree, and we're working hard.
So we have a motion and a second on the table to approve, to extend the, uh, wind ordinance moratorium until June thirtieth and twenty-five.
We'll get this, I don't have it written yet, unless you wanna do it right now.
Does it have to be a resolution, or does it have to be, uh, just an extension?
I don't sign in writing.
I was like, what are, are you asking for a resolution or?
Well, they're just like, they're ready.
They just, they're just in a motion to
Extend.
Extend the moratorium.
Okay, so we'll have to update my moratorium and get you guys to sign it? Or do you guys?
We have it in place. We're just extending.
You have a motion to extend it.
Okay.
So, we don't have a resolution prepared.
No, we don't.
Is that what you think you need?
I think we need one, don't we?
You have a motion that says that until June thirtieth
from next year, so I need to, we need to get a resolution in place so they can sign it then, right?
No, is there already a resolution for the moratorium?
Yeah, we're just extending it.
Oh, so that's all we gotta do?
We just.
I was doing resolutions for the other ones to extend it.
I don't think you need to, cause you have a motion.
If you let us vote, that's all we're gonna do.
More work, Lori.
You wanna go back next week?
All those in favor extending till June thirtieth or twenty-five say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
I guess going forward with that, when there are meetings, I would recommend people come to them and not wait until April of twenty-five. I know, but.
I didn't hear about it. Well, what do you want?
With the comp, same thing with the comp, yeah.
Right, I mean.
Yeah.
And we can only get it out to the public in so many ways, so hopefully somebody will be coming back and watching this and you know.
And social media is really.
Voice your opinion if you're not coming and voicing it.
Um, and I, you guys, whoever did it, Don, I think you might've had some push in this. The new website, I can just see so many positive things coming out of this, being able to notify people signing up for notices. I, I am very excited.
Well, they certainly give us a nice presentation and, and hopefully this is how we move forward and keep up with the times.
I, I'm hoping, yeah, I'm thinking this is gonna be a good service for the taxpayer.
Yep.
So, alright, and Lisa, I'll come talk to you, cause I gotta see what paperwork I need to do to extend that original moratorium or that, um, original resolution for the moratorium. Okay. Cause it has to be some documentation, I'm assuming. Okay. And then the next thing I wanted to talk to you guys is about our current zoning ordinance. It's, it's rough, you guys, um. It's, it's outdated. Some of the definitions are non-existent or very poorly written. Um, we've actually started talking about this when Laura was still interim, interim, um, zoning administrator or helping me out after I became the zoning administrator, and we, we put it on the back burner. Um, I have a wish list of of different things that are not even, this is just my wish list of problems, to fix problems that are within the current ordinance. Um, cleanup is needed. Um, I'd like to talk to you, or I'd like to have you guys allow me to contact ECIA to see if they would help us in the new ordinance and see what it would cost to contract with them for that.
Let's, uh, I, I guess I would be in favor of talking, asking, maybe get a quote. Um, it's certainly understandable that from time to time, we need to review and update whatever it may be, whether it be zoning or whatever it may be, so I think that's logical, um, again. We're probably not budgeted for a large number, but I don't know what we're talking either for assistance or whatever it may be. I know you're a one-man show again, so, um, hopefully we can get some.
Well, maybe if they can give you the skeleton, it kind of, I think we're gonna have to personalize it, you know.
Oh, we will.
To flesh it out to our particular needs.
I don't, I'm not so sure you even need our approval to move forward to.
Okay.
Until you start spending funds, I think you can talk.
But I will. No, yeah, I know. Okay, so we'll, we'll do that and then get some number three.
See what kind of information you can gather and let you, yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, and when I'm speaking of the regular ordinance, um, I'm gonna wait for Lisa to come back, um. We probably need to be reviewing our subdivision ordinance. Lisa and I agree that there's some things that need to be addressed in it that, um, you and I talked in the past about, if I'm, if I'm looking at an ordinance, you know, working on our ordinance to get that cleaned up, we both see that there's issues with the subdivision ordinance
Definitely.
that need to be addressed.
Yeah.
And maybe we could work on that simultaneously.
Just like, you know, the comp plan, I think you all have sat here and said, you know, this is a twenty-year plan, but look what's changed in twenty years. And our subdivision is no different. We need to definitely take a look, make some changes to what we did twenty years ago versus what we do today and move forward, yeah.
Yeah, cause we.
Absolutely correct. I think as things develop and, and things get bigger and better and whatever, setbacks or whatever, they need to be reviewed. Yes, peri- periodically.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll look into that and maybe talk, when I talk to ECIA to see about the subdivision ordinance, you know, kind of working with them on that too, or is that something you wanna address just in-house?
I think we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's discussion to be had. I mean, you, again, you could reach out to other individuals and, and whatnot. I mean, whatever information you can gather.
If we have a clear path forward, I'd say we can do it ourselves, but if you think that there's muddy water ahead, then we probably need some assistance.
Okay. Um.
Good discussion.
Yeah, yeah, okay. There's always muddy water, come on, Lisa.
It's gonna get a lot muddier next week.
Is it now?
Five feet more.
Okay.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, anyway.
Alright.
Any questions or concerns for me while you got me here?
Hmm, all good.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Well, at this time, is there any other boards or commission reports that anybody would like to elaborate on? Okay, at this time, we will take a short recess. Okay, so we will reconvene at this time, and we've been informed that Andrew Long is not gonna be present this morning. He doesn't have any new updates for us. So is there any other business before the board?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.